To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Call meeting order. Motion to approve the agenda.
A move. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All, agenda approved. Minutes from two, three, twenty twenty.
I've read through them, they look good, so I would move to.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, minutes approved. General public concerns? We like to have a quiet day, too cold to come out, it's chilly. All see none? Keeping on track, Rod Ben, give us an update on the secondary roads.
Morning.
Morning.
Ben?
Didn't feel like I had much on the agenda much this year, I think I've only had one or two things.
It's mostly budget related?
Yeah, yep. Um, so trying to catch everybody up on what we've been doing with secondary roads. Uh, we did get a letter two weeks ago, I believe, saying that the flashing stop line beacons that we had applied for back in October was approved for funding. So, I think July first is when that money becomes available, so we'll purchase some and get them installed after the first.
Remind me where?
We got like three locations.
We got three locations. It'd be where the Eagle Blacktop runs into Blacktop South Door.
Door, I didn't know if there were any access, yeah.
Um, north of Badger, where we've had quite a few that have gone straight through the intersection and barely missed that new High Line hole. And then the other one is on top of Albertine Hill.
Sounds like all the bad drivers are in Beaver Town shows.
Yeah. How come you stay there when nobody's here to put that in print?
I mean, ideally, we'd like, I'd like to see them between.
There's some busy roads there.
Between Bow and Livermore, too, I mean, at that intersection, but we don't want those stop signs, that's.
Oh, that's state.
Oh, they have to be county before you can, okay.
They have to be county for us to apply for them.
Okay. I know there's little solar powered things with the lights around the outside, right?
Yep, yeah, so it's uh, solar powered on top with a single red beacon above the stop sign.
Oh, no, it is just a single one, okay, 'cause I've seen them where the red light goes all the way around the octagon.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen those too, uh, the ones that we're looking at, it's just a single flasher.
Okay.
Um, the road groomer that you guys gave me information on last week, we're gonna try and demo one of those in the spring. I've talked to quite a few counties and they, they all talked positively upon them.
Good, good, isn't it, Dave?
Yeah.
Bruce?
What I hear from them is if, if you run with the, the small eight footer, you can run with just a pickup.
Oh, pickup.
Otherwise, they said when you go to an eleven footer, you, you switch and you use like your mower tractor and just take the back mower off.
So you said it cuts down on your distance that you?
You, you can obviously, you can run faster and you can run when the roads are, are soft in the spring and in the fall. Everybody that I talked to, they said basically, you know, it's, it's, it's not an end of motor grader.
No, it's not a motor grader, no.
It's, it's a tool.
It's a tool.
It's a groomer.
It's a groomer, yeah. You know, it's relatively inexpensive tool, I think it's right at fifteen thousand for one of them machines. Um, Green County makes their own, uh, from the sounds of things, the guy that is selling these road groomers used to work for Green County.
Yeah, that's what he told me.
Yeah, he retired, I mean.
Retired from there and went on his own, yep. Um, so we're gonna try and get one of those in for a demo in the spring. Uh, Sandy had also mentioned last week about a, a person out in the country that was asking about, uh, brake braking.
Yep.
I've talked to quite a few counties on that one as well. To do something like that out in the county, you have to pass an ordinance.
Okay. I'm worried about that.
An ordinance to estab- establish the limited use of engine brakes and compression brakes. Sioux County got one, I talked to Randy Will in Webster County, they pursued one, uh, had multiple work sessions on it, ultimately, they ended up just putting up, uh, signs that said, uh, no engine braking, it's not enforceable.
But it gives them the idea, hey.
But it gives them the idea of, hey, don't.
That's the question, can you put the sign up without the ordinance, apparently so?
You can, as long as it doesn't have the word enforced underneath. Um, what, what Webster County ran into is law enforcement didn't wanna be on the hook to be out there issuing tickets.
So how about? You have to put a sign up, you can say enforce.
But, I mean.
As a reminder?
Yeah.
Please, please, I mean, it, it can't hurt.
It can't hurt, no.
Could you, could you do that?
Yeah, I mean, we can look at ordering them signs and putting them up in the spring.
There's other spots too, other than the one you mentioned earlier about, yeah, there's, there's other spots.
Right. Or, or you, you, or you pass the full blown ordinance and then you make it enforceable.
You know what?
I don't think we want that.
Did you say that was Webster County? And they, the, the law enforcement is not apt, you know?
No, I'm, I'm sure if I talked to Krueger, he'd.
No.
Say the same thing, I've got more important things to do.
But it, it certainly is a reminder.
Yep, yeah, we can look at that.
I think that's a great idea.
What's the science of?
Um, so, so with that, I talked to, uh, the old engineer from like Lynn County, and they've created a policy that when people come in asking for new signs to be installed, it's a two hundred and fifty dollar fee, that covers the cost of the sign and the installation. He said that because they were getting about one every three weeks for requests for new signs, whether it's children at play, uh, bus stop, whatever, you know, and once they passed that resolution, uh, they saw their requests go down quite a bit. We haven't had that many requests, most of them have been, you know, easy to eliminate, blind driveway access, stuff like that. Um, so I don't think we need to go that far, but yeah, it's gonna cost probably two fifty, three hundred bucks to put up a couple of signs, depending on how many signs you guys want.
They get cheaper the more you buy, I'm sure.
Right.
Well, I'm guessing the truck count on that corner in the summer?
Oh, yeah.
Scary.
Yeah, yeah, so are, are we looking at, you know, a couple hundred feet in each direction of this intersection?
He mentioned that he, he would like it behind his, the one pat, or before his house, not, don't count, yeah, don't, right, to the north of his house, don't count the stop sign, but count from his house. Because if you do it, you know, say even a hundred, two hundred feet, whatever, before the, the sign.
You're still gonna hear it.
Yeah, it's gonna be right at his house, basically, when that, so he would like it, yeah, to the north.
Right, or to the west.
Yeah.
But they'll have to understand that it's not enforceable.
Right.
We, we can't.
Right.
From.
Right. It's a suggestion.
Yep, exactly.
How many requests did we get here?
For sign installations? Five, maybe, not a ton. Not worth the trouble of.
No.
And according to the MUTCD, I mean, they've eliminated most of the signs that are actually required by, by county. Uh, their response to it is basically driver fatigue, the more signs you get up, the less they pay attention.
The less they pay attention.
Oh, that makes sense.
Therefore, they put the flashing stop sign up. They're the one they need to pay attention to.
Therefore, they, they've got a list of maybe a dozen signs that they say are required.
Right.
You know, most of those are the regulatory signs, the, the way we met the, the stop signs.
I think that's a good idea.
The other thing you could do, and I don't wanna say this, 'cause I don't wanna cut my own throat, but you make a call to the DOT and say, you know, this, I can't really sit it out here, 'cause it's so noisy, and they will send someone over and they quiet down law.
Yeah, he said he has done that, and.
But they're only able to be there for.
Right, they said they didn't wanna.
Right. Cause they were over on Highway three and sixty-nine, they're at the corner, and to
say they, we got acquainted the other day because he was just, well, he just pulled me over to see what, what I was hauling, and they said, the stiller's going over the feed mill, do you have a ticket? Showing me my weight, scale ticket, he goes, so I assume that you're legal, 'cause you're illegal, they don't give that stuff away, so I wanted, have a good day.
That's easy.
So, that's, I mean, the same thing, they, they'll do that out there, they'll, but I bet you the truck count out there, I bet it would be close to three to five hundred.
A day.
Corn trucks going down there, and the rock trucks during the peak of the season in the spring and fall, easily five hundred.
Yeah, I know, I've talked to, uh, the last I talked to the Blue Boys was about some yuks driving on county roads to get up to Gilmore quarry.
Mm-hmm.
I know they're hovering over in that area, too.
Well, they're doing that on that, for that chicken, or the manure that they're building that place over there south of the Dosters Mill, all those side dump trailers are coming out with the manure on the side and it's flipping onto the road, and then people are dodging and trying, and yes, I said, well, there's quite a few of those trucks, 'cause that's why we're.
Over here.
So, they do, they do respond, just, all we can do is do what we do.
Yep, I agree.
Uh, rock hauling, we're done with Hardy Thor location, boat is about half done, then we'll move on to Livermore for stockpiling, this is what we've been doing in between snowstorms, getting those built for the spring. Five-year plan is progressing, uh, the DOT came out with a new program, so there's been some growing pains with that, but when I get all that figured out, I'll bring it in and double check that you guys are fine with everything on it, and we'll process that at the same time that we do the DOT budget.
Okay.
Good. Um, next week or the week after, I'll have a Midas resolution for our STP money project, which will be four years out, that'll be twenty twenty-four, paving south of Hardy. We have to pass that officially through, uh, Shirley Helgivold with Midas. Um, talked to Bruce Hefty last week, he's still trying to get that crossing through, trying to work with the adjacent property owners. I talked to his contractor Friday, he's supposed to be working up a quote to do the county's portion of that, as soon as I get that, I'll bring that in for board approval. Um, ABL, I've talked to a couple of people about, uh, basically asset tracking management, I know I've talked to Rick and Bruce recently about it, I had a couple of meetings online with, uh, possible candidates. Last week, what you're looking at is about thirty-three dollars a unit, um, and about thirty units, so you're gonna spend about a thousand dollars a month to have asset tracking management. Um, there are other options out there, uh, I know the guys that we do our radios through up in Altona, that's a lump sum one-time price, last year it was thirty thousand to do it, but there's, there's no monthly fee. Um, it seems like Verizon last year was twenty-five dollars a month per unit, and then you had a installation fee, or the cost of buying the equipment, um, but I haven't touched base with them lately. You're either looking at a one-time cost or a thousand dollars a month. Yep. Uh, and we have a bid letting next week for the bridge project, that's around the corner from your boat, so.
Do I got these pool papers on that, do you think?
I, I pulled it up this morning, as of right now, there's three contractors that have it, uh, Graves Construction, Dixon, and Cunningham Rees are the three. Uh, Dave was supposed to be touching base with Merriman Auto-Gas, and Christians and Brothers. Well, last I talked to Dan was back in November, and he was interested, so.
Okay.
He just hasn't pulled, pulled the plans yet, so.
What, Whydeman didn't do any?
Whydeman is mainly dirtwork or box culverts. Um, my hopes are, when I, when I hear back on right away for this box culvert, and Dave's got a box culvert, which would be south of Gosh Park, on your way up, uh, the hill towards Erickson's. Once we get those two finalized out, we'll have a, a local letting for those two box culverts, and we'll try and get Whydeman, or Midwest, or PCI, or somebody to do those.
Would that be a quick deal?
Should be.
Cause you'd really throw Cree Text, or whatever their new name is, into, yeah, all that traffic coming through Main Street, that's the only way out of there, 'cause they'll try to snake up through that.
I've, I've never seen a moving permit from anybody down there, so.
No.
But yeah.
But I have seen one of those long beams try to go up through that timber, and they ended up on their side a couple of years back.
Yeah, it'd be, uh, it'd be a quick turnaround, it's a, I think it's a six by six box that we're looking at putting in there, it's a four by six right now, so.
They probably threw the trucks down while there was rock.
Yeah, yeah, which is, you know, I mean, what we usually do is leave it as rock for the season and let the traffic beat it down, yeah, for me, and it, so.
There's not a lot of water, so it should be a big.
No, no, it's basically, it's an over, it's an overflow box when the river gets high enough, so.
The river's never high these days, so.
Yeah, sure. Other than that, that's, that's just kinda an update of what we've been up to, like I said, we hadn't had a, I didn't have anything really.
Coming in and doing.
What was our sand doing?
We refilled our sand bunkers, week ago last Thursday, um, so we're set for the rest of the year.
Good. Hope, hope it's there next year.
I, I say, I hope it's there next year, I hope we're done.
Our calcium's holding up?
Calcium's holding up, we're down to, I think we got three pallets left, but like I said, all of our bunkers are full, so we should be good for the rest of the year, and then I'll just look at ordering two truckloads next year to replenish our inventory.
Okay.
So you're outside of Bow, they're bought down with their rock moving around here?
Right. Uh, so Bow's got about half their pile left, and then the pile that we put up over at Livermore, which is about thirty-five hundred ton, that we put up over east of Livermore in the curves.
Mm-hmm. Does that, Bow's shop complete responsibility on that one?
No, everybody's owning.
Well, just, you know, and you've run into this, just make sure that there's not an, a issue with, uh, snow equipment versus being on the trucks with the rock hauling, you know, that guy came up here a while back, having blades and stuff on these, we'd like to take everything off if we're gonna haul the rock.
Right, I mean, like I said, this is something that we do in between.
I know, but, so that, you know, I know I talked to Tom, said, yeah, they're hauling rock, and it's like, okay, by all means, if the snow is, you know, gonna show up, be ready for the snow, you know, don't spend.
It takes a half an hour to put on the snow equipment, I mean, the guys can complain if they want, but.
It's.
Putting it on, you can show up at three-thirty in the afternoon and throw the snow equipment on before the end of the day.
Thank you.
So, it, it, it doesn't take a long time, I mean, I hear a lot of weeping in the national team from guys that are pulling in two to put the snow equipment on, but the, the truth of the matter is they can throw it on in half an hour.
Yeah, they can do it pretty quickly, but, and, you know, normally, they think ahead, like, well, we're hauling rock today, it could snow tomorrow, let's have it on there today.
Right.
Versus the half hour, the following morning when they.
Yeah, and, and that's typically what they do, they, they'll pull in at.
Come back in a little early.
Two-thirty, and, and start putting snow equipment on. A lot of times, if it's a, a light dusting, we haven't been throwing our wings on.
Right.
We've just been putting the front plow on and the sander on the back.
Just, you know, I'm sure they keep that in mind, 'cause that's, till that gets wrapped up, and you just don't worry about back and forth with the snow, you know, blades and such.
Right, well, I mean, like, I think there's a chance of snow on Wednesday, so my guess is the guys are gonna finish their first round this morning, 'cause they're not finding much, then pull back in, start stripping equipment off, and they can haul the rest of the day today and all day tomorrow, and put the equipment back on.
I'm not sure, I'd rather have the snow than the twelve below they're talking.
Be careful what you wish for.
Wednesday, Thursday, they're talking twelve below with no wind.
We need some really cold weather to kill all those germs.
That might.
You gotta, okay, it's kinda high and low, it's supposed to be mid thirties to twelve below to back the other direction, so.
Having said all that, you got covered everything it looks like? Appreciate the update?
I just wanted to update you guys.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Come in anytime with the update.
Thanks, Ben.
Well, we're just fractionally past eight forty-five, but we need to, uh.
Let's go get claims first.
You wanna do the claims, is that okay?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
I had, uh, looked through there, and the only one I had, question on Peggy, was there's one on there from Harmony Animal Clinic, is that a full month, or is that?
Couple of cats and some dogs, wasn't just one animal, it was mostly boarding.
Boarding fees.
The boarding fees, once we get this building up, that'll greatly reduce, uh, it was probably eighty percent of the cost was boarding.
Okay.
So.
I had, uh.
Like no surgeries, or any, just shots, basically shots.
You looked that up?
Yeah.
I need shots.
Well, Lucy might get a shot or something, but.
I had two hundred and forty-three, five seventy-three, sixty-nine for general, and drainage was twenty-eight, three nine four dash forty.
I'll second Bruce's motion.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both? Motion carries for the claim.
Now we can go to.
Yeah, we need to get into our canvassing. I'll make a motion to adjourn this board of supervisors and convene this board of canvassers.
I'll second that.
Well, it's not gonna take you very long.
We're not gonna have to fight over who gets what?
Nope, we have two.
I'll share with Bruce.
Nobody can have the votes down there?
Yes, oh.
Good deal.
Two people at the polls and two people at the seat, of course. So there are no machine tapes this time, it was a strictly hand count, so you just have to read me what's in the book.
Okay. So, this is, uh, course, south of here.
Okay.
This is under Mayor Ivan Hendricks, one.
Okay.
Mayor Joanne Hendricks, one. Council member Roger, Roger Stricklinger, Strickinger?
Stringer.
Stringer, okay. Two, Bonnie Stringer, two, and then council member Joanne Hendricks, one, council member Ivan Hendricks, one.
I'll look through our polls there.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
Okay.
I got the, uh, precinct, uh, Mayor Ivan Hendricks, two, city council Joe Hendricks, two, uh, Bonnie Stringer, two, and Roger Stringer, two.
Okay, that matches what I have, so we end up with a vote for Mayor Ivan Hendricks with three, Joanne Hendricks with one, for our council member at large, we've got Ivan Hendricks with one, Joe Hendricks with three, Bonnie Stringer with four, Roger Stringer with four, and that was a vote for three. So the three top vote getters would have been Joanne Hendricks, Bonnie Stringer, and Roger Stringer, and Ivan had the most votes from there.
Okay, so we're good.
Mm-hmm.
You cleared your vote?
Yep, I need a motion, thank you.
I'll take, make that motion.
You gotta second it.
Yeah, 'cause I think.
Oh, did, okay, second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Keeping on track, Dave.
I will.
Now you motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn the board of canvassers and reconvene this board of supervisors.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, we're.
The board of supervisors. Thanks to each of you.
You're welcome.
Thank the people who.
Yes, thank everyone. People who are voting, yes.
The top one for.
Yeah, for city of pioneer, we very much appreciate having a mayor and council, so they can continue on.
There.
Leave the top.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever.
Right.
Okay, moving on, uh, just a technicality, got a quote from, uh, our buddy Don Reefer with BMW control specialists, we talked about this, it's in the budget, but he always likes a signed copy, and it is official then for his insurance. Uh, so basically, we just need to accept the quote that he has given us, and to be official, we need to have a meeting, so.
Quote is a quote?
Quote is forty-two thousand, four hundred dollars, covers our entire weed control program for the coming fiscal year, twenty twenty-one, and chances are that's more than what it will be in twenty twenty-one, but depending upon this year, and I don't wanna go in, if you want more explanation, some of the things that we've thought about doing, obviously there is money left over, it will not short us with that amount, if there's some things still in twenty twenty-one prior to the next budget year for weed control. In other words, our favorite thing, I'll just technically, uh, wild parsnip, he's, he's sprayed early in the spring, uh, so if we find that we, we're gonna do a couple stretches this year, that's kind of a tr- a trial project, and note some this summer, we may do that earlier in the, uh, spring of twenty-one, on another stretch to clean up that wild parsnip, this would still be money for that. So we don't know yet, but as Don typically, you guys know from his brush control and drainage ditches, his quotes are usually a little bit high, so, but, like I say, we're not gonna run out of money if we do something extra, so. Forty-two thousand, four hundred dollars is the quote for the weed control program for twenty twenty-one.
Make the motion to accept the quote from BMW for their forty-two four.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All, accepted.
Off the side, one of these, or whatever, we'll get some figured out.
And then I'll scan it and send it to them, so they see it.
Now we have, uh, so next week is President's Day, on the seventeenth, I guess we should ask Peggy first if, well, we, court officer's correct?
Yes, it is, um, the clerk's office will be open that day, 'cause they have court, but the rest of us will be closed.
And we got the claims taken care of today?
Yeah.
So.
I checked the agenda, there's nothing on the agenda for today, need, or anything with that.
Don't have any need for us for budget work, or?
That was my question.
If you give me decisions today, I've got several scenarios for you, if you give me a half to go, you won't, you do, me here.
I say we do, good point, we have a, yeah, budget stuff to look through today, so, any thoughts otherwise?
I'm good, if we're covered, I'll make a motion to not have it.
I'll second.
And we can only bring it back on.
Right, if we need to.
Yep.
Any other discussion on, uh, that? All those in favor of a meeting next Monday the seventeenth?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Now we have our committee reports to run through.
Well, I do not have anything to mention.
Okay.
I think the only one I had, Peggy, was last week's, uh, budget meeting on Monday.
I had the budget meeting on Monday, and then Tuesday, we had our, um, county social services quad meeting, it was an extra one to kinda go over the yearly plans of what they've got going on, so, yeah, they're working on that. It was kind of a hot topic that day.
Yeah, I just had the budget hearing.
Okay.
Okay, on, uh, last Monday the third, had an LEC meeting that morning?
Oh.
Your budget?
That's, I can do it.
Session, whatever, I'll see.
I need a couple of.
On Thursday the sixth, I had a de-. On Thursday, the sixth, I had a de-categorization meeting at Webster City that afternoon. And then that evening at five thirty, we had a nine-one-one board meeting here at the courthouse on the Thursday, the sixth. And that's what I had last week. And open my page, everybody just mentioned this, remember we have the Farm Bureau supper this evening at six o'clock, Farm Bureau building. So anything else that we want to visit about, bring to the board's attention?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Sir.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
All right.
Vote, we are.